This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council will come to order. The clerk will stand to call.
Troy Sellar.
Here.
Terry McLun.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
Vicki Snyder.
(coughs)
David Mitchell.
Here.
And Perky Pyle.
Here.
We have five.
Thank you. Everybody, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Next will be approval of the agenda, motion to discuss.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Floor is open. I need to add, want to, new business number five, really, SWEPCO resolution contract to keep our servicemen in their area. Yes, sir.
I'd like to move item number four under new business to number two under unfinished business. We have guests that we might possibly use during the discussion, so rather than have them wait for a couple hours, I'd like to move that item to number two under unfinished business.
Your second?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Do we have anybody here to discuss weekly rentals?
I don't think so.
Okay. Because we shouldn't make those people wait either. What was number five? What were we going to do?
It's resolution contract we have.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
If there's no concerns with Mr. Perky Pyle, I'd like to drop item number three from the agenda.
I'm fine with it.
New or un-
Uh, unfinished.
Okay.
No discussion? I, I mean, no, there's no vote. We just, they just do it automatically because it-
You got a second.
Once you get a second, that's it. Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Is that postponed or something, or just gone?
We can bring it back up if the-
For the time being, it's off the agenda.
Right now, I don't feel it's pertinent.
Anything else, anybody? One last chance. Nothing else? All in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brings us to approval of the ministry of April the 8th, 2013.
Motion to approve.
Aye. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Minister approved for April 8th, 2013. Next to be commission committee authority reports and expired terms. Beverly, do you- There you go. Okay. For planning, okay.
Good evening. I did want to let you know that on April the 9th, the planning commission did deny an application for a B and B at Adrian and Drive. Don't know if that will be coming to you as an appeal yet or not. Tomorrow, we have a full meeting. We have a new construction review for an O'Reilly's Automotive Store at 109 East Van Buren. We also have a tree ra- tree cut request at 179 North Main. On May the 14th, we have two public hearings. One is for a setback variance at 37 Mountain Street, and one is for a rezoning at 123 South Main. So, we have a full, full schedule, and I just hope that somebody else will apply and, and help us fill up that commission. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, moves us to CAPC. In your package, you should have a renewal application for Ms. Bobby Foster. She was- Motion to approve.
Second.
She currently held position number four. Her term expired six thirty to twelve. So... This was an approval?
He's moved to approve, I seconded.
Okay. Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ms. Foster is back on. Thank you, sir, and ladies. Okay. Nothing from hospital, nothing from parks. I don't think we have anything from HDC cemetery. That brings us up to public comments. Get our board. Thank you. Jerry Landrum, you first. How are you sitting? Is it going to be tall enough for you?
I can get short.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Jerry Landrum, working with the Citizens Climate Action Progress Committee. I have a little handout for you tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have a little bit of progress to report on this gloriously beautiful Earth Day today. Um, I've arranged, next week, we have Mr. Jason Greenwich is coming on Tuesday, and he's a contractor that works for the SWEPCO Power Company and does their small business direct install program. So, I'm looking for people to maybe agree to have your, your business looked at and see if they can help you. It's no cost and no obligation. Um, according to their paper, they estimate that about seventy-five percent of the cost of the improvements would be paid for by their rebate schedule. So, it's a good opportunity, I think, for, for businesses to get with the green thing without having to figure everything out because they do the installation. So, um, please, maybe give myself or Clinton Booth a call if you'd like to have your business on the list of to be looked at next Tuesday. That'd be a great thing for, for council people to do. I know a lot of you do have businesses. Also, progress in the state legislature. Project number two in our climate action plan that the last council unanimously adopted last year was the, the property assessed clean energy, and that did pass and was signed into law by Governor Bibby. It's Act 1074. Now, there'd be a little bit more work to do probably with perhaps a county enabling ordinance and maybe even a city enabling ordinance and the creation of a PACE financing district. Well, what that would do is it would, it would finance that twenty-five percent that's not covered by the rebates by an additional assessment on your property tax so that there's no upfront cost to, to, to businesses and perhaps even homeowners. So, thank you very much. I want to thank Dwayne for patching up those water leaks and, and Mayor Page for his help and hand, and especially Glenn and Booth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Doug Stowe? Come on, Doug. I thought that was you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
We've got three minutes, Doug. Everybody gets three minutes.
Okay. I'm, I'm here on behalf of Save the Ozarks, and on April 2nd, my wife and I got notice that we were going to have a power, we had, we were on an alternate line for a power upgrade, 345 KV with a hundred and sixty-foot tall tower. Now, we live just at the edge of Eureka Springs. Our home is visible from Spring Street, and, and so, you know, I think that that particular line should be a concern to everyone. But I became interested in researching exactly why this line is necessary, and of course, they say, oh, it's necessary just to give line security and a minor upgrade. Well, I want to put things into perspective, and I've got a letter to pass out to everybody. This is written to Mayor Page and the city council. And, and so, the, just for comparison, what we have now supplies about, in Carroll County, with three lines coming in, supplies somewhere under 260 kilobytes. Um, 260 megawatts, excuse me. The single circuit line that's proposed to come in here supplies 400 megawatts, so it's almost doubling the, it would more than double the current capacity. And it's up, it's scheduled then for upgrade to 800 megawatts by adding a second circuit. So, what you can extrapolate from there is that this really isn't to serve our community at all, it's to carry power on past us. Now, in the state of Maine, they call their 345 KV lines their interstate highway of electricity. And so, the line that the state of Maine uses to export power to Canada is a 345 KV line because it's designed to carry large amounts of power over a great distance. And so, if we were to think that we wanted to have an interstate highway come into Eureka Springs, uh, here, we're asking, you know, they're proposing that they're doing something, an interstate highway of electricity. And the consequences of that, I've spelled out in my letter that I hope you'll take seriously, and I would like to see some action on, on the part of the Eureka Springs City Council to express our city's disinterest in having this line come in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Patricia Helwig? Okay, come on in. Sorry, I'm trying to get on.
I am Patricia Helwig. Have lived here since 1996, and I live on the Wolf Ridge Road adjacent to Inspiration Point overlooking the White River Valley. And yes, I too received a letter that SWEPCO wants to put this massive transmission line on part of my property. Doug's explained, you, you all know by now how big this transmission line is. The corridor is half the length of a football field, the towers are a hundred and fifty feet tall, and the pesticides will be applied to the corridor forever. Well, I am very concerned for several reasons. First of all, that SWEPCO never had any public hearings about this. As landowners, in fact, the community, we found about, out about this less than thirty days ago when we got a certified letter, and guess what? We have only thirty days to complain to the Public Services Committee of Ar- the Arkansas Public Service Committee. Thirty days, and guess what? You need a lawyer to complain. You can't just put in a petition on your own. In the reports that we have gotten that are public knowledge, we found out that the county judge and the mayor of Eureka Springs knew about this last October. As citizens, we'd like to know why they didn't inform the community because there are so many consequences to this line. I'm also very concerned that one of the most beautiful places in Eureka, the, Eureka and the White River Valley is going to be affected by this transmission line. And SWEPCO has not given very good documentation as to why they need it, as Doug just said it. It's sort of, we're getting ready for 2016, and that's the extent of the detail they go into. I'm very concerned about the environmental impact statement. My husband and I, both geologists, PhD geologists, have read it in detail. It is a boilerplate document with almost no hard facts, and for an area that has some complicated geology, there is almost no geology ever mentioned in a hundred and fifty-page document. As council in the primary city that's going to be affected, you need to look into this. I'm very concerned for Eureka Springs and its businesses. In some very solid studies, it is proven that real estate values near a transmission line fall twenty-five percent on average. The higher the value of the property or the land, it falls even more. Sometimes it's like zero to fifty, but guess what? You don't need to worry about whether your real estate values are going to go down because the market freezes up. It just collapses. This is a sc- I can give you the, the reference on this. Some very solid reports. Okay. In conclusion, when the properties lose their value, we'll get less tax revenue. What are we going to do to support our schools and our emergency services and our infrastructure? Think about that, and it will happen. Would you please all go to the Save the Ozarks website and learn more about this? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Eileen Powell?
Good evening. My name is Eileen Powell. I'm a resident of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and while I may not reside in the city limits, I contribute to the economy and viability of Eureka Springs, and I am not alone. I'm volunteering my time with Save the Ozarks to create awareness, help inform people, and also reach out to all elected officials as to our plight with this SWEPCO project. I stand with the citizens who oppose SWEPCO's new transmission line that stretches forty-eight miles from SWEPCO's Shipe Road Station to the proposed Kings River Station, which will destroy over eight hundred acres of land in the natural state and contaminate our waterways, our drinking water, our air, and our land. I moved here three years ago after losing my home in New Orleans to a man-made disaster, and now my home in Eureka Springs, which is ground zero on four of the proposed SWEPCO routes. To lose your home twice in one lifetime to a man-made disaster is unimaginable. I survived the first one and hope to survive this one. But hope, hope is not a plan. We need to take action and demand action. The economic and environmental domino effect will touch every one of us in this community, inside and outside the city limits. I cannot stress enough how important it is to come together as it matters to all of us as a community. Communities know no boundaries. Devastation and destruction of all ilks do not discriminate. I humbly ask the city council to support the efforts of Save the Ozarks and the entire community affected by this project, that very community that feeds and fuels the viability and the economy of Eureka Springs. It is unconscionable to let SWEPCO project go on without fighting for your city, your community, the one that supports it, their economic and physical well-being, and your precious environment. It is not too late to do what is right and help Save the Ozarks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Glenn Crenshaw?
Oops, that's me.
Is, is there anyone that answers questions about this?
No, it's on the agenda, Joyce.
Okay. Okay. Hi, Glenn.
Hello. My name is Glenn Crenshaw, Eureka Springs, Arkansas, also an all-seasons real estate company. I think Ms. Patricia kind of jumped all over my parade and got into the real estate department, and I think she did a great job, and I agree one hundred percent with what she's saying. The other thing that we need to take a hard look at in Eureka Springs is what kind of impact is it's going to have on our ecotourism business. We've been spending years talking about Leatherwood, all the things we do around Eureka, Carroll County, to make this a great place for people to come visit and stay. I don't think I'm going to see a lot of people coming up here asking for us to give them a power line tour. That's not a zip line that they're putting up. This is a huge transmission line, and Doug made a good point. He said it's kind of like the interstate highway. Well, you know what the interstate highway is when you don't have any off-ramps? Property that's not worth much of anything. So, that's pretty much what I've got to say. Appreciate y'all's time.
Appreciate it. Ms. Lanny Ballance?
Evening. My name's Lanny Ballance. I'm a resident and a registered voter of Eureka Springs. I'm here to talk to you about a couple of different items. First of all, the sewer. I was quite upset that Dwayne Allen stood here in front of you and told you that we had not pulled a permit for that job. Our plumber indeed did pull a permit for that job. I don't appreciate being slandered at a city council meeting on public television. What we have going on here is pretty much maintenance by emergency. When they opened the line in the street, when the Public Works gentlemen cut the street and opened the line in the street, the main line, they found it was full, full of debris and roots. So, their solution was to cut out a little section of it and stick it in there and call it good. We've been having problems at our duplex since we bought it in 2006. We've replaced just about every sewer line there is available to replace in that property, and we're still having problems. So, maintenance by emergency is not working for this town. I can see why some people wouldn't probably be very upset or worried about this. Most of the people sitting around this table, if it happened to their property, it would probably be fixed very quickly. A check would be cut if necessary. It would be swept under the rug. Pretty sure our mayor doesn't really care a whole lot about it because it's not going to affect his property because, guess what? As far as I've been able to determine, the mayor doesn't own any real estate in this city. So, I really wish we could do better for our citizens, our citizens at large, and that somebody here would represent the people who are having horrible things happen to their property and by the city, and the city doesn't want to make any reparations or remunerations. As far as this horrible power line that they're talking about, again, this won't affect the mayor's property as far as I know. He doesn't own any property in, in any real estate in this city or in the county, so he doesn't really have any vested interest in this town aside the pay, from the paycheck he gets for being the mayor, which the council wants to make larger. So, I'm pretty disappointed that he's known about it since way back last year, and gee whiz, didn't think it would be a big deal to anybody who was going to have a hundred and fifty-foot swath cut through their property and pesticides applied in perpetuity. Um, as far as wanting to put people from the city council on the planning commission, that may be a great idea, especially when the, when things change around. As we know, things go through peaks and valleys around here. Sometimes these people are in control, sometimes other people are in control. So, if you decide to do this, it may be a very good piece of legislation for the other side down the road. Want you to think about that. As a matter of fact, a few years back, I had applied for planning commission after I'd sat on there for a couple of years. Sometime after that, within the next year, I FOIA'd all the applications for planning commission that had been submitted during that past year. Interestingly, mine was not among them, so I presume it had been trashed. There were about a dozen applications for the planning commission, none of them whom had been brought forward for nomination. So, you know, maybe you should think about letting some people who want to stand up and represent this town, have worked in this town, maybe you should quit being so picky about who you're stacking the commissions with and let everybody have a chance.
Thank you, ma'am.
My time is up?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, council.
Jeff Danos?
Works about as well as everything else around here, doesn't it?
Old County Courthouse.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Jeff Danos. I live on Pivot Rock Road just outside of city limits. I stand before you tonight to ask the city to take a stand against SWEPCO's proposed transmission lines across Northwest Arkansas. The last time I stood before city council, we were fighting another battle, a one hundred eighty-foot cell tower within the historic district. With that project, the landowner actually wanted the tower on his property, and he got it. This project is a little different. The towers carrying these lines are a little shorter. They say up to a hundred and sixty feet tall, but there will be a new tower placed every eight hundred feet for about fifty miles. Okay? And between each one of these towers, there'll be a hundred and fifty-foot wide path of herbicide-soaked destruction. Happy Earth Day, right? But the big difference in this case is that the property owners don't want the towers on their land. In fact, as of today, of the nearly three hundred comments that have been posted on the Public Service Commission's site, not one of them is in favor of this project. This is the voice of the people that you were elected to represent. If you don't think these lines are going to affect Eureka Springs and its tourism, consider this. The new lines will be visible from Spring Street, they will be visible from Thorn Crown Chapel, and the Christ of the Ozarks. They will be visible from Lake Leatherwood, the Beaver Bridge, and they will run smack dab in the middle of the view of, at Inspiration Point of the White River. They pass within, they also pass within three hundred feet of the Eureka Springs Cemetery. Now, every funeral or visit to the cemetery is going to be accompanied by the constant and disrespectful hum of three hundred forty-five thousand volts of electricity passing overhead. It's not the kind of funeral that I would want to go to. If SWEPCO builds these lines, it will affect our city, and not in a good way. Now, to be honest, these proposed lines do not run directly through my property. Okay? They run through my neighbor's property just to the north of me. So, I, I could just look the other way and say, you know, hey, not my problem, right? But that's not what being part of a community is all about, and that's not what being a good neighbor is all about. So, that's what I'm asking the city council to do. Don't look the other way. Be a good neighbor, do the right thing, make a statement, issue a proclamation or a resolution or whatever you can do, but please take a stand against this SWEPCO disaster for the sake of our community, our visitors, and our town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown-Hostick? Just leave it open. Yes.
Good dear, is that me?
Yes, sir, it is. Come on in. How y'all doing? Yeah, just leave it open. You're up.
All right. Got a little bit of information we'd like to pass around. First, we'd just like to say that it's been really incredible here the last few weeks. How many people have, have come to our door, how many new, new neighbors we've met and friends we've made over, over this sewage issue. I've written a little letter. It's concise, so I, rather than just ramble on, I'll read it to you. Mayor, city council, and citizens of Eureka Springs, at the last city council meeting on April 8th, 2013, Mr. Dwayne Allen of Public Works made a couple of false statements that we would like to see corrected. The first involved our contacting Public Works with the sewer backup we experienced. Mr. Allen indicated that Public Works was not notified in a timely manner and that he did not know the extent of damages until March. A work order that we obtained through the FOIA dated February 7th, 2013, which was approximately twenty-four hours after we had begun to figure out what was going on, states sewer backup into motel units, plural. Had he been informed by his own department and/or cared enough, Mr. Allen certainly could have driven across town to investigate. It seems to us that in a town so dependent on tourism, such concern and investigation are not unwarranted for folks such as ourselves and so many others on the front line of welcoming guests to our city. Concern and investigation should not be unwarranted for any citizen or business experiencing a sewer backup. It is akin to having one's property condemned. The false second statement made by Mr. Allen, and it's already been addressed at the same meeting, concerned our neighbor, whom Ms. Snyder commented had blocked off the street to work on what appeared to be the city's main sewer line. When asked, Mr. Allen stated that a permit had not been issued and that such, such activity was illegal. An honest mistake, possibly. However, we began to see his statements and answers to our questions as obtuse and unreliable. So, we dug further and requested over three years of work orders and found them extremely unreliable as evidence that Public Works did not jet the city main in R or any other neighborhood during the time that we were away. In the three years' worth of work orders we reviewed, and we've summarized that for you folks, um, we found three occasions out of three years that jetting was certain to have occurred. It appears to us that Public Works would rather hide behind the skirts of a hard-working plumber's liability insurance. We also made a FOIA request for Public Works' maintenance plan and schedule for maintaining the sewer collection system here in Eureka Springs. We were denied such information because it was deemed internal. We think that means does not exist, which leads us to conclude the ultimate cause of our backup was the super clog that occurred as a result of neglect on the part of Public Works. Any maintenance activity is certainly not reflected in the work orders we reviewed. Any maintenance activity is certainly not reflected in the work orders we reviewed. In Mr. Allen's defense, we understand that funds obtained for sewer maintenance and repair have been diverted to other uses. Maybe that money can be put back. At Mr. DeVito's request, we asked, but weren't unable to find any evidence of jetting from the two houses Mr. Perkypile feels is upstream from our home and business. But we have attached a letter from the owners of Thirty Nova Street, one of the two houses upstream, explaining the work that Ms. Schneider had alluded to at the last meeting and problems they have had with their sewer service. Thank you.
Okay. Are you gonna hang around? I think y'all are still on the agenda for number one of unfinished business. Okay, we'll hold on to you. Okay, thank you. And okay, that will conclude our public comments. That brings us to unfinished business. So, Brian, you might as well just hang around. You're number one. Yeah. Sure, we'll court sewer issues on the agenda. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Floor is open?
Well, I see Mr.
Mr. Allen. Yes, go ahead.
See, Mr. Allen is here. Dwayne, you and I talked on the phone earlier, come forward a little bit. Uh, this afternoon, I was just trying to get an indication of, you know, you having looked at the work orders and such, and you'd indicated that there was no indication that any of the city crew had performed any jetting during that time. Is that correct?
No, not in that timeframe. We went back, you know, into December and expanded a little bit, yes.
Okay. And I, I'm not sure I followed everything you were saying there, Brian, about the, about the, what you feel like you may have discovered with your FOIA, but, um, it, it seems to me like it's still kinda in this mystery mode, this nebulous area. We don't know what really went on, uh, or who did what, or...
Like I said, we know there was a backup, but not to that extent, you know, till the timeframe, so, uh, uh, and we, uh, we had addressed it, you know, in February, what we, made sure that line was good, so. Uh, at that point, I didn't know, there was nothing else we could do except pass it on, you know?
What, what was done during, in February?
Well, we came out and, uh, at that point, after the plumbers had rotted and jetted it, we jetted on down, uh, we camered the line, uh, we discovered where that line came in, we di tested, uh, made sure that the roots were cut out of there. Uh, anything we could help along those lines, yeah.
Dwayne, was this after, after the reported sewage?
Yeah, this was February seventh, I believe, yeah.
Because after, we had two plumbers work the city main over, you know, unknowingly.
Is it your contention that the city, do you still feel like the city came in sometime between that point in February after you'd already returned and the time when you left in December and performed a jetting operation? Is that what you feel like?
I, I don't really have a feeling either way on that. Um, I, I just know that the line was clogged and something caused a backup on our property. Jetting, you know, is, been talked about as the proximate cause, but for us, the ultimate cause is just a, you know, Mr. Allen referred to it as low flow. It was no flow, um, during this time. When, when we opened up our, uh, uh, cleanout, the sewage actually started coming up out of the, the system and into our yard. There was nothing flowing in that city main because we were only five foot from it.
Was that, was that before your plumbers were working on them?
That was the same, that was, you know, we, we tried to exhaust everything that could have been on our property before we called, and we called plumbers, and they, they started looking on our property.
Okay.
Um, so this was all, um, I think the fifth, and it was, uh, the seventh that we contacted the city.
Well, I think the city recognizes that that's, uh, Dwayne, correct me of our conversation if I go off kilter here, but that, you know, there are probably some root problems there. There are clay tiles, uh, roots have started, uh, entering, you know, they, we've, we have camera work that shows that they actually entered, correct?
Yeah, when we camered, there was still some on top, but we assumed that the jetter had knocked some of that loose, so. Uh, like I said, in oh-nine, the original area, we, we excavated and replaced a section. Uh, it was a massive root problem, and, uh, we thought we had the problem, so...
Well, in your opinion, what would it take, what, what do you think it would take to fix this? I mean, do we replace the remaining line until we, we, we get downstream enough where we don't have any backups or where we have clear, uh, sewage flow, or we have good sewage lines? I mean, our problem is that we have old clay tiles that allow roots to, to, uh, enter the system for nutrients, and, um, we need to replace some of those with, with PVC, don't we?
Yeah, and that's, uh, that's what we're attempting, we're hitting different areas where we identify, so that's, you know, like we've, we've said before, if we, if we think there's a problem enough in that area, the roots, to, to, to take that on. Now, we're not talking about coming in and taking it back to this tap because we believe that the clog was on down from, you know, where Abel comes in. Um, you know, he's protected now to a degree where he puts the backwater valve on there, but that gets into anybody that's, you know, clay line anywhere in town, root could come in any joint, could back up, and if you're, if you're low, it's, that's the way it's gonna come, and that's, that's the frightening part of the system.
Well, let's back up to my, uh, uh, previous question. What would you say we need to do or needs to be done there, whether it's the city or, or the private owners?
Well, we said, maybe come out and reevaluate it.
I'm sorry, let's just keep it to the city. What does the city need to do to prevent those roots from going in there?
Basically, another camera, and then if, you know, we identify, we're, we're getting that excruciation and those roots coming through those, the joints, we're gonna have to dig it at, at that point and try to avoid any more backups, yeah.
Well, Brian indicated that there wasn't funding in your department to do that. Is there funding to do that?
On a limited basis, yeah. You know, like we said, there's not funding. If you wanted to come in and replace that eight-inch and put a new manhole and drop it and knock some rock out, no, it's, uh...
Well, part of what I wanted to do by getting on this council is to address some of these problem areas like this, and I think that's our responsibility as council is to decide if this is a problem area that we need to direct funds at. So, um...
Right, and that's, uh, you know, that's, that's the problem, and we're, and we're trying to stay ahead of it, and our take is, is we hope everybody's, you know, supporting us. It's not gonna do any good to try to, you know, to back on the, on the bad side of it, and, you know, it's what it is, and we'll, we'll admit where we're at and what we've got and what we've done, so. But, uh, you know, for the citizens to try to think that we're, we're not them, we are the city, you know, we're working for them, so that's what we're trying to avoid, so. And we, you know, we're, we're not getting upset over the situation. It's, it happens, and it's happened before, so...
Would, would staying ahead of this kind of issue, um, would that, would that mean maintaining and keeping them, you know, known problem areas, keeping them cleaned? Because we, we, we looked for a schedule and a maintenance plan, and, and, uh, we got, uh, we got denied that information, and, um, do you have a...
Well, it's, you know, some of the cities, larger cities, ADQ, sometimes they, they, what's they call a C-MON, is where, areas where they do require, uh, area to be jetted in a periodic manner if you've got problems. That from oh-nine that I know wasn't a problem area. We have some areas that were more problematic than that, but you can also get yourself into trouble. Jetting, just the act of jetting can cause problems, and, uh, sucking drains dry or flooding something, so you have to be very careful of what you do, but if it's needed, you're correct, it needed to be done.
Mr. Mc...
Dwayne, when it was reported, did you, did you get to see the motel in the condition of the backflow?
No, I, like I said, we, the guys, we thought it, you know, it backed up and it was taken care of, and then, uh, I saw the pictures in March.
You saw the pictures?
Yeah.
Let me ask, in, in your time that you've been here in Eureka Springs, have, have you ever found a backup that is backed up like the pictures demonstrated that wasn't jetted?
Yeah, if, to that degree, if, you know, we've seen it where it's backed up in a tub that much, but if, if, he's saying it blew out of those seals and the toilets, no, I haven't seen that. You know, if, if you're low enough and enough head pressure, I've seen it where you'll knock one loose and it can, it can plug again and back up, you know, it can, it can blow in just from running in the pipe and coming back and surging, but, uh, no, not to the, the point if it's blown out of the commotes to that degree, no.
Okay, and then another, could follow up to that. Has anybody, Ryan, had contacted the plumber that was doing the work at said duplex to see if they jetted at any point in time since all of this now we see in a letter and have heard discussion, there's been so much work at a property that's so close to you, has Has anybody talked to that plumber?
I can address that issue.
I'm not asking you, I'm talking to, I'm not talking, I'm not talking to you, ma'am, I'm talking to the, to the director.
We asked, we did ask the two, the two, uh, the two neighbors that we have, um, that, um, I guess you guys feel that that's pretty much the extent of the upstream, um, sewer line from us, so, uh, and we, we, we found no evidence that there was any jetting.
You talked to them personally, the plumber? The, the, the owners of the property or the plumber that was doing the work?
Uh, well, I talked to the owners, did you talk to...
You talked to the plumber?
Talked to Billy, the one who did the, of Economic, who, who did that little section, um, that, I guess retapped, but there you know.
Okay.
And, uh, no, he didn't, he didn't say that, he didn't say anything about jetting, nothing about jetting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr.?
Okay, this is a question from someone who knows nothing, but this seems to be a recurring problem with roots. What is the source of these roots? Where are they coming from? If you clean them out, it seems like they grow back again. Where are they coming from?
Well, the stupid answer would be trees, but, you know, it's, it, through those joints is where they get in, and especially when it's dry, they're gonna find the water, so the drought has increased that, and they'll find water and they'll work their way in there. And some of the old, old clay tile is, you know, it's, it allows that to happen.
So, um, are there problem trees within, say, fifty feet of where this problem is occurring that need to be removed?
Well, you know, that's, that's even some of the distribution, you would like to, you know, to keep it clear right above your lines, but that's, that's almost impossible to do here, you know? We've, we've got some larger trees that are just right on our lines. If we start trying to, you know, knock them out, it's gonna be almost impossible. I mean, it, it, the best-case scenario in a large line, and a lot of the larger cities do, they keep that area clean, but, uh, that's, that's gonna be impossible here.
Well, it would seem, yeah, I'm, I'm aware of the lengths trees will go to to find water. I mean, I've got an oak tree in my front yard that's doing amazing work at that, but, uh, it, it seems to me that if you're gonna go through all this problem replacing these lines and, and getting them all jetted, it sounds to me like that's not the answer either, that there needs to be some kind of a cutting tool that goes in there and reams the whole thing out. It would seem that you want to eliminate the source of the roots in the first place or it's gonna keep on going on and on and on.
We do cut, you know, so much buckle in the road in places, and we've cut some roots back and tried some barrier to try to keep them from coming in the road, so, um, it's a problem. It, it, it's, it's a problem with the streets also, but it's just something you kinda have to deal with case by case. And you're right, if, if some, if that was one tree and right there and right on it, it could be that we might have to, you know, look at that, but that's, that's hard to justify sometimes.
Okay.
Uh, Dwayne, I mean, with the PVC, PVC is continuous, so you don't have the joints that you have with these old clay tiles, and it's stronger, so it's, it doesn't crack with earth movement and, and shifting that we're going to see around here. Um, so, and it's smoother. Um, so that, to me, seems like that's one of the, one of the solutions to this overall problem. Let me ask you a question real quick. What do you think the, the just ballpark estimate, you don't have to answer it if you don't want to, but what would it take to replace that line and put a manhole in there?
How long?
Sir?
How long?
Well, that's what I'm, I don't know how long the line would have to be.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's another thing, where do you stop? But I mean, if you were gonna, to just do it for up here, you know, you're talking, you know, uh, three hundred feet or something down to the corner, so, you know, you're dropping it in, you know, with the, you know, the manhole itself's probably gonna cost you twelve, uh, hundred bucks to probably get it poured, put in, and you're looking footage, you know, three, five, something like it. It's, if we do it ourselves or we jobbed it, you know, job it, it'll be quite a bit more, so, but...
Could, could Public Works do it themselves?
Yeah, a lot of times we, we've done it, but a lot of times on the larger manhole, we, we have that contracted, we'll help maybe form it, they'll come in and form it, and we'll do the, the pipe work, but, uh, um, like I said, it, you know, you kinda hit a lot of root problem on down and on through and then on the other side, which is, if it does back up, of course, there's manholes, there's, there's some issues on out, so, you know, it's, it's, you gotta, you gotta pick what you wanna, where you wanna spend your money each year, yeah.
Right, and so, understood, but this has happened three times in four-year period, five-year period, something like that. So, this is one of those areas that we, we need to work on.
Yeah, and this, with a low tap like that, with a tap that's below grade, then it's, it's gonna show up, and a lot of times you'll have a backup that won't even come out, you have a, nobody even knows about it, or, you know, it might run out of a manhole, we turn it in, we take care of it, but this, with that situation is coming right in, so you're correct, it's a, it's a...
So, is it a five thousand, six thousand, eight thousand dollar fix? What are we talking about?
Well, I think we could, usually our take on that is to take a look at it, and if we, we probably wouldn't need to do the whole thing, you know? If, if, even if you put a manhole behind it, he's still gonna be low, uh, so unless you redo that where he's setting, uh, you know, our take was if we need to, we come back in and do a section for, you know, that's gonna cost us maybe fifteen hundred bucks or something, lay in, and then, uh, hopefully, we're good.
Replace the bad section right now that we see the roots in, that we've camered and everything?
Well, from the corner, um, where we tie in, that, that line only goes up, I'm, I'm only gonna guess, judging by this map that we got, um, a couple of houses up the street, um, you know, one on each side, you know, so, and they were the ones that had some root-infested pipe removed from front of their house, so, is, if you're gonna fix it, fix it up to the end, because if people upstream from us have got problems, they're just gonna be sending their problems our way, and, and once you get on around Glen, I can't imagine it being all totaled more than a couple hundred feet, I'm thinking the fall really, um, takes off and goes downhill again.
Mr. Mc...
I'd like to see if, uh, Mr. Perkypile, representing council, can be a liaison with Dwayne, because right now we're, we're discussing sewers and, and, and future projects, and it's not addressing the issue that we're here today to speak of. So, I, in, uh, to be expedient, uh, I don't know that we're really accomplishing anything here. We're, we're discussing sewers and mains and things that this council really doesn't have the ability to address by ordinance or in any other way, so these are technical issues, which I would hope, uh, Dwayne, and maybe with Mr. Perkypile's aid, to keep the council informed that we can go farther with this, because, uh, I, I really don't see that we're moving on this issue here.
Mr. Mc...
Well, I'll agree with the expediency part of that, but I just wanted to open up the concept that, uh, we need to spend some effort and some money on this problem area, and we are the ones at city council at this table, we're the ones that direct where some of that money goes, if we have problems. So, that's the reason I brought it up.
He has a budget and allocation as to where issues arise.
But there's an issue with the amount of money that he currently has.
Well, we don't have any, so I don't know where you're gonna get it.
Yeah, Mr. Mc, you're next.
Um, yeah, I mean, I like where Mr. Perkypile is going, and then I think it, it may be, it may be a resolution that if the dollars, uh, are workable and, and the repair can be, can be effectuated, maybe, uh, uh, in lieu of recompense to them, the fact that we can do something to alleviate the problem so it doesn't reoccur, you know, directing that instead of directing funds... so it doesn't reoccur, you know, directing that instead of directing funds to them, directing it to the fix of the line. To, you know, might be, that might be the way to go.
I don't think anybody at this table disagrees that the issue of sewer is not a vital, an important one. And I do believe it was one of our priorities. And all we're, we're going to be looking at here in the future is obviously can we get, where can we get the money? How much can we get and what can we do? And I think we're even right now in the priorities discussing cameras, and, no, that was water flow, sorry. Discussing other issues about this to help with the infrastructure. I, I understand what Mr. DeVito is saying. I think the issue that's before us right now is the city liable for the damages that Sherwood Court has claimed? And we have kind of moved into the future and the infrastructure and all, and I, I totally understand that. And it would probably be a good idea to get back to the core issue that started this in the first place. And is the, is, that is, is the city going to hold with toward immunity? Are we going to cough up money or what we're going to do?
Any further?
That's it.
Okay. Are you going to make that a motion?
I would just move to, to further this on to the next agenda and leave it on our agenda because, you know...
Okay, you, you were heading towards a motion to ask Mr. Perkypile to be the liaison.
Well, I mean, I'd, I'd...
Or suggest.
Be great that he could do that. I don't...
I'll do that.
Feel that we need to instruct him to do that.
We don't need a motion without you volunteering. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
I will do such.
Any further? Mr. McLean.
Yeah, I want to hold any, what, I don't really understand exactly where we're leaving it right here. I'm not so sure they do. I don't for sure. So somebody want to tell me?
Mr. Perkypile, would you care to jump in this?
Well, apparently, we don't have any money. So, uh, at this point in time, we're, we're, we're kind of leaving the hostics just, um, sitting there to come back to the next meeting and, you know, when Dwayne and I can get together. But we haven't resolved the issue as to whether the city was responsible for this, this sewage backflow. And I'm not real sure that we're going to get, I think you've done, you two have done as much as you can. You have done as much as you can. We have an owner of one of the properties upstream that has indicated that, that, and her plumber that has indicated that no jetting operation was performed. So I don't know how in the world it happened. It did happen. At this point, it appears to me that the city can rely on its toward immunity in terms of the, the event itself. But I, and, and I'm, I'm concerned about that, but I'm also concerned about what do we do from here? Because we can't just let this continue to go on.
Mr. McLean.
That's why, you know, I'm trying to encourage maybe some resolution here. If we can, with Mr. Perkypile and, and...
Mr. Allen?
Yeah, Mr. Allen, they'll put their heads together and, and, and coming up with, with a plan of action as far as, you know, what it would cost, what it would, you know, really effectively make, make the sewer main work there in, in terms of replacing it and fixing what's necessary. And so it's a permanent fix. Then, then maybe, maybe they'll be happy with that if, if, if they can look at their property and know that down the road that they're not going to have to come to this table again. Or, you know, whenever it comes time for them to pass the keys on to somebody else, it's not going to be an issue that they're going to have to worry about coming back to the table on. That, you know, that, that peace of mind may be enough for them. I don't know, but, but, but it might be. And that's what I'm trying to push is for some resolution.
The last issue that came before council, the city admitted jetting, jetting on the line. There, there's no evidence that the city was involved in any way other than there's a clogged main downstream somewhere. So lacking any evidence, uh, anything that the city can do, you know, to help alleviate any future problems, you know, I, I encourage, uh, Mr. Allen to, to work toward that end. But without any evidence, I, I don't see what council can do here.
Toward immunity. I really, really hate to be breaking that concept. There's just something about that, that when you start chipping and breaking away, and we had the big case not too long ago, is that still out municipal league or that gets settled? I forgot. Help, help me out, please, attorney? Somehow it got taken care of, okay. Not by, not by the city, though?
Not by city dollars.
Not by our toward immunity?
Not by our toward immunity and not by city dollars.
Thank you, sir.
I don't, I don't know if, if, if James is referring to my statement, but, but I'm not throwing blame on anyone. There's no blame. It's just a way to resolve an issue and for it to go away, you know? It's, I'm not blaming the city at all, not even close.
Okay, Mr. Perkypile, I believe has expressed his interest in working towards a solution on this issue, so you two get together?
I'll, I'll do that.
Can I request that possibly Brian be involved in that?
I don't see why not.
Then the other thing about jetting, we can't prove that it, that it was jetted or not jetted. He can't prove that it was jetted or not jetted. In my opinion, negligence is duty owed, duty breached, damages because of. Duty owed is to maintain the sewer lines. Duty breached, they weren't, they weren't maintained. Damages because of, we were damaged. I understand toward immunity completely. We haven't hired an attorney, and if, and we don't want to hire an attorney. But if I, he can let me know, but if once, what I understand it is if we hire an attorney and then we sue the municipal league, then it takes it out of your hands and it goes to hire. Is that right or wrong?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I don't know, so I'm asking.
I just want to add, you know, toward immunity is nothing that is first heard from our lips. I mean, we, we are here concerned for this community, and that's, that's, that's our main reason for being here.
One, one, one question. Clarifying, Mr. Perkypile is going to get Mr. Allen to discuss the future of the infrastructure of the sewage issue, not to make resolution as to whether the city is obligated to damages. That's still at the council table. Is, I'm just wanting to clear where we're going here.
That's correct. We're, we're looking at solutions for...
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to table this and place it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Second.
Good second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In your post. All right, table to the next agenda.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
If you all need Dwayne for anything else, you can, you can go home.
No, thank you, Dwayne. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay. All right, that moves us on to number two. Or number, well, we'll just say agenda item number two. The town hall meeting or shop date?
Actually, it's, uh, the discussion of the SWEPCO power line right of way.
Oh, okay. That's, that is great, my bad. Okay. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second. Floor is open? Yes, sir.
This came to my attention through a personal friend, Eileen Powell, about the scope of, of this SWEPCO power line. I think probably it wasn't represented as Ms. Powell and the rest of the, the people involved who received notice and who have since become involved in this issue of just exactly what the scope of, of this power line right of way is. 160-foot towers every 800 feet, a clear-cut swath of 150 feet or yards, feet? 150 feet.
That's the right one.
Having gone to their site, and I applaud them for being so proactive in such a short length of time, I, I'm quite concerned about the city of Eureka Springs and the Beaver Lake area. We have an extraordinary resource here that benefits the entire state of Arkansas with the amount of revenue that we generate through our one industry, that being tourism. The impact to some of our most significant visual attractions cannot be understated. And I've learned a lot in the last week. The view from Inspiration Point, probably one of the most magnificent views in Arkansas, will now have a power line running through it. Thorn Crown Chapel, an internationally acclaimed piece of architecture set in a pristine environment, will have the power line within 500 yards? 500 feet? 500 feet. A view from Spring Street of the power line.